We're calling the Metropolitan City Council meeting to order Monday, October 22nd, 2012. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Kurzine.
Present.
Daughery.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Midnight.
Here.
And Mizell.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you've given each and every one, dear heavenly Father. We pray that you will be with our community, dear heavenly Father, for the past several days, dear heavenly Father, the tragedies that have come upon our community. Be the ones, dear heavenly Father, that have lost loved ones, not only be with the family, dear heavenly Father, but be with the sick that are trying to take care of the ones, dear heavenly Father. Be with our service personnel in these trying times and foreign ground, dear heavenly Father, guide and direct their lives and bring them safely home to their families. We ask that each and every decision that is made here tonight will be for the better of the community. We ask in thy precious name. Amen. Any other motion to approve the minutes of the October the 9th meeting, please?
No move. Second.
Moved by Mr. McManus, second by Mr. Mizell.
Okay.
Or Daughery? Okay. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
First item, citizen's request. Stratus.
Good evening. I have a couple of questions. One, do we have ordinance about cars without plates, insurance, and yards and on the streets?
We do.
Okay. Well, I have it, there's another ordinance also, it's called a toll ordinance. And I'll read you this 11th paragraph. All tolling services must maintain an empowerment plot for the empowerment and storage of towed vehicles that is located outside of the city limits. And that's the key to it, outside the city limits. And this is in ordinance 2008-24. And we have up here on 7th Street, a salvage yard. I mean, half the cars up there, the plates are outdated, some of them don't have plates. We got a liquid fertilizer truck up there that's been there for years. We've got an intrepid, white intrepid without plates that's been up there for a couple of years. And then city parking, most of those cars are just sitting there. We had a pickup truck, had a flat tire sitting up there, right there close to the highway, that's had a flat tire, and it's been there for going on two months. And according to this, it can only be there for about two weeks. So I'm wondering if we can have that investigated. And also, the gas, that old gas company building on 7th and Market, that thing is getting to be a death trap. You've got a brick chimney hanging in the air on the north side of that building in the back. The bricks are falling off of it. And, you know, if kids get around there and get to playing like they used to all the time, we're gonna have a problem, and who's gonna be responsible? But also, people wanna come through here and put in a business, and they see this, do you think they wanna put a business in? That's like going into Carroll. So, but if you could do some investigation on that, I would appreciate it, and get back to me. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Massey, please.
I, uh, I did pass that information on to Mr. Merryweather on the fertilizer vehicle and those other vehicles. There were some vehicles tagged by Officer Cook that were moved. However, Hillibrand doesn't tow, so the tow ordinance doesn't fall under that. A1 tow's, but none of those vehicles belong to A1. And they're not out on the street, so I just don't want you to think we ignored it. We did look into it.
We do understand. Thank you, sir. Any other citizen's request? Mayor's report. Motion to accept terms and condition of accepting airport improvement program grants from the FFA.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Barfield. Second by Mr. McManus. Discussion. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a couple of other things under the mayor's report. Remember, the chamber dinner is tomorrow evening. Doors open at 6:00, meal at 6:30. And I have turned in reservations for everybody here that needs to go.
It says in the Baymont Mayor or...
No, it said Harris.
Harris.
Okay. Under the encampment, actually, I got an email today that Saturday, there was 132,000 people went through the encampment on Saturday. 64,000 on Sunday, which was a total of possibly 198,000 people. And on Friday, they actually had about 2,500 Boy Scouts, schools, and things of that nature. And that was even down a little bit, it still had 2,500 people because there wasn't quite as many schools because of the fort being closed. You know, it kinda detaches from them coming, but we need to put out a great big thank you to Chris and his staff out there. A lot, job well done. And, most importantly, all the people that take out their time to go out and fix the food and stuff like that to accommodate the people. I was not there Saturday, but I was there Sunday, and even at only 64,000 people, it was pretty well crowded, and everybody I talked to, of course Rick worked in a stand, and everybody said they did a little better than they did last year, which is good because many of those civic groups and stuff like that make just about everything they can make during that one event and stuff like that. So it's very, something very good for the community. So, job well done for everybody that participates in that. It was, of course, I couldn't try at all, but cleanup weeks, October the 22nd, that week, and October the 29th, that week. Household hazardous waste, Saturday, October the 27th, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And that will be at 101 Catherine Street, which is there, the old powerhouse location there. Industrial committee meeting on November the 1st at 1:00. Tuesday, November the 6th, Water, Light, and Street Committee. November the 9th, 9:30 to 11:30, flu shots at City Hall for full-time employees. And that's, that's good, my, your, work of counsel, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. One quick thing before we leave the subject, since Mr. Adams brought it up, and I thought maybe it might help to refresh everybody's memory about the gas company building. If you recall, because most of you were on the council during this period, and we took that building, the, we actually had structural engineers look at the building to determine what would be needed if we wanted to take it down. And it was gonna be a fairly extensive process to take it down. The likelihood is that we'd have to build a shore-up wall or a shoring wall because of the, of the party wall that exists between that and the old dime store building. The, and we saw that, same thing that was encountered between Jeff May and Dr. Wang up the street from that. A lot of those old buildings have party walls. And you pull one out, you gotta put another one back, or you're likely to cause it to shift and fall in. Well, we actually went out and looked at bids, tried to get some bidders, solicited bids at that time, and nobody would bid because they had demolition insurance. We didn't want, we wanted to be protected in case something happened to like Mrs. Fitch's building next door. Since that time, we looked at it, and also, if you recall, we put it out for bids if somebody wanted to buy it, with the condition that they tear down the back part. I think the part that maybe Mr. Adams is talking about, that we thought was probably the worst. We couldn't get a bid of a dollar from anybody to just come in, buy it for a dollar, provided you would tear down the back part that appears to be. Now, we could obviously revisit that at a committee meeting, but I didn't want the public to think that this is not an issue that the council hasn't addressed. We've tried numerous times to address that, the city council and the mayor have, without any success, because there's nobody wanting to buy it, nobody's wanting to tear it down. Now, you know, when you don't get any bids, that's kind of a telling factor. But sometimes, it's helpful if we revisit those things, because not everybody was aware when those things took place, what did take place. But we actually spent money, the city did, to have structural engineers look at it and see how it could be done safely. And it's gonna be difficult, but anyway.
So, Mr. Abelwood and Eastland interested in that?
At one time. Well, they were till they figured out what they had to come up with to tear down the back.
They wanted to buy it next week, you know?
Yeah. There were some that wanted to, until they looked at it, and that's the problem. Somebody looks at it and says, ooh, there's a job I gotta do, and they tend to back away from it. But you're right, they did at one time want to.
Mr. Abel, if you need any more information on that building, the old insurance book at the library has construction of that wall. It shows how it's built, when it was built up there.
I've seen the deeds and the restricted covenants myself in the title work on the use of that.
It shows the power wall and the, I figure it's three walls there, that's what I could imagine.
You know, it's probably a thing to take back either to demolition committee or again, and let them look at it, maybe let the engineers look at it again for us, but at some point, I know we looked at one time at least having the whole thing taken down, and it was considered to be a very difficult project, and probably not one you'd wanna undertake in a difficult financial year either. Okay. Because it's very expensive. The only other thing I had tonight, and I'm gonna hand these out, and this is by the, by the numbers, is all inclusive, and I'm gonna be brief about this, but we've had, I'm chugging on myself, that's why I heard you chugging. We have, a lot of folks, and you, you know, you think after time, folks will figure out about zoning, or they figure out about building permits and things like that, but you'd be amazed how many people in the last just few months are buying property, finding out they've got difficulties with that property, either building on it or using it for some particular purpose, and not understanding. And we have for the last couple of years, I've asked several times Penny and Kathy to put something together, and they got busy and didn't have time. And so, I've asked Chad, but Chad's kind of new, so I thought, well, I've had a couple of talks with Chad about this, and we, I just started working on this. Before you buy, we want people to understand, before you buy a property, go visit the planning and zoning folks, okay? Find out if there's gonna be some problems with this property. We've had problems with property that was bought recently that was in the flood zone, and the person didn't know it was in the flood zone, but they didn't check. They didn't check with our people. And when we say is a flood zone, there is a flood map that was published in the 1950s or 60s, okay? If you're close, if you're even close to that Zone A, you need to go check, because it's based on the elevation of your individual property. And property to property, that varies a lot, okay? I mean, you may have a, or you may have a property that's got a little piece of that property that's out of the flood zone, but the bulk of it's in the flood zone. Well, what good would that be? None, unless you can build it up. Well, in this particular case, the individual would have to build the property up eight or nine feet to build on it. Well, you just can't do that. You know, are these properties subject to restrictive covenants? A lot of your subdivisions, Highland Noah, Lindsey Edition, Crescent Carter, Hospital Edition, the newer subdivision, James Drive, they all have restrictive covenants, say you can't put this, or you can't put that there. And we don't always get in and enforce some restrictive covenants, that's usually a property owner thing. But there are some, these are things that people need to check into before they buy, and then they will have some of the problems. Zoning, alboos, utilities, and who's gonna pay for them to get that pinfall type of property? The property owner may have to pay for the utilities together. Are manufactured homes permissible on the property? We find a lot of people come in, buy property and say, well, there used to be a trailer there, I'm gonna put a trailer there. Doesn't always work that way, may not be zoned for that, may not be big enough for that. So, it's really advisable to check. Same way, if you're gonna build, or contract to build, or even buy a pre-built structure and put on the property, like a carport, go talk to Chad. Even if it takes a day or two to get to Chad, because he is a one-man office, they need to go talk to Chad, because it can save them a lot of headaches in the long run. Commercial property owners and people that are looking at commercial establishments, they may, they may need a site plan. Depending upon the size, they may need engineered drawings. Now, we don't usually require that for small structures, but big structures that can accommodate a lot of people, yes, they usually need engineered drawings. Site plan is usually almost all commercial uses need a site plan. People say, well, why don't you need a site plan? Well, we need to know how the water's gonna run off your property, so we know how to catch it, so it doesn't run off on the neighbor, and so it doesn't run into, we don't flood out the sewer or something. We also need to know where you need your utilities to come in from. There are lots, there are these rules, there are these regulations, they've been around for, since the 1960s here, but it's amazing, we've had a whole host of issues lately. I won't say the last three months, this has come up on at least once or twice a week basis, of people either buying or starting to build and finding out they got problems. Some of the misunderstandings, is I thought my Realtor took care of it, okay? Well, we have a great bunch of Realtors in this town, very professional people, but it's not their job to know all the ins and outs of zoning, or all the ins and outs of building, rules and regs. And they all have very, and some of them are pretty good at it, but it's all based on their experience. Not every Realtor has the same level of experience. And so, don't rely on the Realtor to take care of those kind of things. People have to sort of step up and come and see the planning and zoning office, and Chad can help walk through that. Some think their carpenter took care of it. You'd be amazed how many people get started in front of, well, I thought my carpenter got that permit, and I thought he took care of it, I'm telling you this. No, the owner needs to do that. Another one we've run into, I live in the county, so I don't think this applies to me. Well, zoning applies, so most of your building regulations apply, one and a half miles out from the city limits, and that's by state statute, and that's what we've adopted. So, we've got a relationship with the county now, where the county, if it, if it appears that somebody's coming in to get a county building permit, and they're, they've got that area identified, Chad's identified it, form at the assessor's office, then they say, hey, you probably ought to go talk to the city. And 90% of them, we don't have to do anything. 90%, or maybe more than 95%, say we're not having to do anything. There's always just a few that we need to look at. A couple of things we don't handle, just so that people know, we don't handle boundary disputes. So, we may tell you you can have a fence, but we're not gonna tell you where the boundary of your property is, so that you don't approach on your neighbor. We don't handle runoff. So if your neighbor builds something, he runs water off on you, or drops dirt off on you, we don't handle that. That's not within the city's jurisdiction or their authority to handle. But a lot of people come here thinking that it is. And these are, like I said, these are just some common misunderstandings, but things that we need to address. The reason I brought this up tonight, now is not exactly a prime building time, unless you're like me, you just love dust and wanna tear your house up, but the, I'm bringing this up because we're very close, we're getting much closer to having our new zoning ordinance in place. We anticipate having the zoning commission back here in November, looking at public hearing in December, and probably being ready for the council to adopt the new zoning ordinance by the end of December, first part of January. We've actually set some of the hearing dates already. So, I make, I wanna make you all, and so you can make your constituents aware of this in advance of that, because I know we'll have lots more questions once that takes place. And the idea is, let's get folks thinking about ask. Go ask. Go ask before you build. Go ask before you buy. Go check it out, because it saves a lot of heart to float. That's all. Very good.
Next time, committee reports. Park and Recreation, Mr. Carroll.
Yes, Mayor, I have one motion to make, and before I make that motion, I'd like to make a statement that Sean Pagram, with a degree in agricultural service, was recommended. Sean has successfully developed several sloper fields in all quarters, applying several types of grass as meat. Sean comes well established. He has a degree, experience, insurance, and equipment. Sean was told to concentrate on the two large fields, and stated, in six months, you will have grass if you keep the field as one. Six months later, unit number one played their first game on the McCoffrey Farm, that is, that was. Due to success and to willing to oversee the field's victory, the committee recommends Sean Pagram to maintain the existing four fields. Sean's testament was provided for budget purposes and approved by the 2012-2013 budget committee. A dry summer and unstable economy resulted in a higher estimate. Actual cost is expected to be less. And I make the following motion. Motion to accept maintenance on the four small sloper fields for the spring 2013 year with Sean Pagram in the approximate amount of $11,350. And again, that was for the budget estimate, I think it's being considered revised. That's my motion, Mayor.
I'll second that. Motion made by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Mizell. Discussion.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to know, since this is six months away, what is the problem with going out for bids on this? It's over $10,000. I'm not saying that Mr. Pagram is not a great guy, I wouldn't want him to walk up here right now. I have heard he does good work, that's all I know, but I also know there's other people that's in the landscaping business that equally does good work, that also has degrees. And, I mean, to me, if we're gonna be good stewards of the people's money, we ought to go out for bids, and let everybody that's interested in it put a bid in, and let the best person win, whether it be man, woman, child, or whatever. So, therefore, that's, I'm gonna be voting no against this, just for the simple fact that we need to go out for bids and seek the best price for the people of Metropolis.
I wish you'd been on, available back in February, when we was having all the problems locating someone to do this, that had the experience, equipment, and so forth. And that's the reason we went with First River Ag, and they actually recommended Sean Pagram. And we checked him out, I checked other people, they didn't want to do it. One man lives here, Louisville, Kentucky, he, that's what he does for a living, but he wanted to be paid from tiny net costs for the time he's got time. We couldn't afford that. But that's the reason we went with Sean, and that is my motion.
Any other discussion? We do have a motion, we do have a second. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
No.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else for Park and Recreation?
That, that's it.
Next item, industrial committee.
Yes.
Midnight.
In recognition that we were given a proposal from Metro Holdings, we did, our committee did study it and analyze it, we had several questions, Mr. Abel raised several legal issues we had, and because of that, the committee did make a recommendation that we reject the proposal. So I would like to make a motion that we reject the proposal as presented from Metro Holdings.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Midnight, seconded by Mr. McManus. Discussion. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item is a second reading on the ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Metropolis and DC Management LLC, Darren Toxene and Corey Bowman, so I would like to make that as a motion.
Second.
Number?
19.
Motion made by Mr. Midnight, seconded by Mr. McManus. Discussion. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's all we have for this time, Mayor. I'm glad you're reminding us about our meeting.
Next committee, Water, Light, and Street, Mr. Barfield.
Yes, Mayor, these items are from the Water, Light, and Street Committee meeting until October 16th, and I will make the motion on the following. I will make the motion to accept an estimate from Massacre County Highway Department for Woodhaven Drive in the approximate amount of $2,784 for applying the two coats of oil and chip the area between existing service and gutter with city employees preparing the area, which they have been doing the last two days.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion? I think it's gonna be spring, I think. We're gonna do it this week. Oh, this week? If nothing happens, I met with Mr. Glasgow again last week, he said if we can get it prepped and get it ready, if we can get it two days at 75 to 80 degree temperatures, it will be fine. And it's supposed to be in the mid 80s through Thursday, with no rain, so we ought to be in pretty good shape. I didn't talk to him today, Mr. McManus, but I kinda think they'll do it Wednesday. Possibly could do it tomorrow, but I think Wednesday probably. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to accept the purchase of a meter tester for the light department from AT Utilities in the amount of $5,611.12. We had three quotes on this, and the highest one was $144.88 higher.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Mr. Mizell. Discussion. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next page. I will make a motion to accept the purchase of ESRI GIS mag bean software, upgrading in the approximate amount of $4,950.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, seconded by Mr. Mizell. Discussion. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make the motion to accept employing HMG Engineering to design the proposed replacement of the bar screen at the wastewater treatment plant at an approximate fee of $82,000. This amount was included in the current budget and is a project required under the term
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, seconded by Mr. Mizell. Discussion. Call, roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's all we have for this time here. Thank you for reminding us about our meeting.
Next committee, Water, Light and Street, Mr. Barfield.
Yes, Mayor, these items are from the Water, Light and Street Committee meeting, until October the 16th, and I will make the motion on the following. I will make a motion to accept an estimate from Massacre County Highway Department for Woodhaven Drive in the approximate amount of $2,784 for applying the two coats of oil and chip the area between the existing service and gutter where city employees prepare an area, which they have been doing the last two days.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion?
I think it's going to be spring before.
We're going to do it this week.
Oh, this week?
If nothing happens, I, I met with Mr. Glasgow again last week, he said if we can get it prepped and get it ready, if we can get it two days at 75 to 80 degree temperatures, it will be fine, and it's supposed to be in the mid 80s through Thursday, with no rain, so we ought to be in pretty good shape. I, I didn't talk to him today, Mr. McManus, but I, I kind of think they'll do it Wednesday, possibly could do it tomorrow, but I think Wednesday probably. Call, roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make the motion to accept the purchase of a meter tester for the light department from HSE Utilities in the amount of $5,611.12. We had three quotes on this, and the highest one was $144.88 higher.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Mr. Mizell. Discussion.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to accept the purchase of a ESR I, G I S, mag beaning software, upgrading in approximate amount of $4,950.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, seconded by Mr. Mizell. Discussion. Call, roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next page, I will make a motion to accept the purchase of E S R I, G I S, mag beaning software, upgrading in approximate amount of $4,950.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, seconded by Mr. Mizell. Discussion. Call, roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next page, I will make a motion to accept the purchase of E S R I, G I S, mag beaning software, upgrading in approximate amount of $4,950.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, seconded by Mr. Mizell. Discussion. Call, roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
I will make the motion to accept the replacement of online finished turbid meter at the water pressure plant now to exceed $2,358.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, seconded by Mr. Mizell. Call, roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.